Many kids my age live in the city and they do not have the opportunity to live on farms and have fun animals. And if kids my age got to be able to raise animals, they would get practice from their parents. So because many people have injuries like.
Yeah, that's something we have. We just hope that you guys will consider it and we'd like to add that for a future vote, another meeting.
Michelle, so I wouldn't you kind of stole my thunder tonight. I've been getting this request a lot.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking about what time of the year can we do it? And I'm thinking, well, the only time it really makes a lot of sense is October. Unless the council wants to move quicker on it. A lot of reasons we're going to be discussing water now and then we'll be doing the budget. There's an election coming up. It might be a nice topic for people to debate. So that's what I thought, you know, but the council may say move faster. Um, I've got some information for them. Uh, I get this request more and more because of the cost of eggs and for a lot of reasons, so. They'll guide it. They'll say, you know, let's do it sooner. If not, I'll put it on the agenda in October. Give the public an opportunity to come in and say what you're saying and kind of give it a couple of weeks, then come in a couple of weeks later and vote. That's what I'm thinking. The other reason for October is if the council changes due to an election, you could turn right around in January, whenever the new council is seated and go right back and try it again. So I like that. But I could be wrong. They may want to move sooner, so. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Is this the time of year that you start getting your chicks though?
Yes, if you, if you do wait till October, it's going to be a question of another six, eight months. I'm taking people that are going to make it through the winter.
I know some people at Wilson have chicks and they just got their chicks this last week.
Yes, and they, they do have a personnel line tractor supply and it's just, it's tough on everybody and you know, the, the ones that don't get sold a tractor supply just go to waste because they can't be. People can't have it here in all sorts, so.
I don't know why we need to put it off. We can discuss it.
Well, I'd put it on the agenda for next time. I, I've done tons of research with this one because town where I was last major had that discussion and they have not had chickens yet. And um, you know, numbers and stuff like that. I've pulled stuff. I have files and stuff from other cities.
I know that Wilson, you can't, you can't have a future, I think you said.
Most of them are, the one issue you're going to have in this town, it's always probably the biggest issue of most towns is especially in parts of the town where the houses are fairly close to each other. Um, you know, fifty foot lots and stuff like that because you know, now you're infringing your neighbor's property rights as well. So I think those are things you have to talk about and think about. Um, and, and that comes up with that, you know, and how many, you know, some are you know, I see anything as low as four and probably as high as twelve. Um, but then you get the ducks coming after that because, I mean, um, well, megalith ducks come in afterwards because, well, I'm aware if, if you know, you can have chickens, but I'm aware it's chicken eggs. I have to have duck eggs. So now you have that issue. I mean, there's all those things you have to think about when you do this. And you fold in there, you know, quality of coops and stuff like that.
Who's gonna, who's gonna, there's a lot to it. That's what I'm saying. Maybe better to put it off, but if you said.
I could, I can make a report and put it on the next agenda if that's what you want.
I, yeah, I know, I know, put it on.
You know.
Let's do it.
Yeah, you too.
I'm well versed at this one, so.
Okay. I think Wilson has them. Solana has them, right? Solana has them. So I'm not a fifty thousand to manage it.
If, uh, it does put your minds at ease, as many as you know, I am a law enforcement officer in first county every city and that county allows chickens. And at least from my point of view, I've not had a single complaint from the law enforcement side about having to check on some chicken or anything like that. And I've worked it for a couple of years now. I've never heard any sort of complaints about neighbors' chickens. So, um.
Great. Thank you for bringing it up.
I know she's a nice little girl, but now it dawns on me. You sold me lemonade for your house.
Very good. Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate it. Yeah. And we'll get it going in two weeks. That'll be good.
I will, I will have just discussion on orders yet, because we.
Right now, yeah.
We discussed forever.
It could be, we have to come back again.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's another issue that someone brought up and it could be someone on council. Remember they said, hey, if you have a limit to the number of chickens, what about the guy that was a half an acre, you know, you know what I mean? There's some other issues that they're going to say, well, I don't, I don't need four. I, I can have twelve, you know, and so you gotta think about those little things, so. Um, but anyway, um, Karen, do you want to come up?
Okay, I'm here in Charlotte and I do live in the city. Uh, grow elsewhere, grow, grow. That seems to be all we're hearing these days. Well, after months of attending these council meetings and instead of grow elsewhere, grow, how about let's finish the project? So people might realize that we're trying to grow unfinished projects. Remove the condemned buildings, the house on Douglas, the house on Third Street, the old hospital. We talk about it all the time, but nothing is done. Uh, there was supposed to be a railing put up on the walk south of town by the creek. There's no railing there because I've been there for a year and there's no railing. Uh, what about our big large hole north of town? Let's get something done. It looks horrible now that it's raining. We can't have a parade. Does the merchants were asked if he did any business during a parade? So what'd he answer? No, well, that's the main reason people come to a parade, so they can do a shopping. What about following the parade? Was that question asked? No, it wasn't. Now, we moved to the big events in Preece Park. And they block off the street, so people have to park elsewhere and walk on brick sidewalks, carrying their lawn chairs and et cetera. Then when they leave, they get to walk back on the brick sidewalks in poor lighting to wherever they could find their place to park. Oh, they say they might give you rides in a golf cart. But how many people can you transport in a golf cart with people carrying lawn chairs? How about the beautiful wide sidewalk you built south of town? The people using it already have sidewalks to walk on to get there. But the people who was, it was supposedly built for have to walk on unmaintained narrow dirt roads to get to it. The substandard housing built out there, we had road graders who maintained our roads. Our road has not been graded for over two years because we don't have a road grader anymore. We have a tractor who runs up and down it. In front of my house, the street has gotten so narrow, there's not even room for two cars. This is ridiculous. Uh, and now I want you to convince me that we are a city that when we say grow elsewhere, grow, we can actually see growth and get unfinished projects completed. Who's in charge to see that these projects are completed? I want to know. Why aren't they being done? Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anybody have anything for Karen? That'll be good. All right, Delvin Vettrock, your name's on here. Come on up.
Oh, I just put down a, in a meeting.
Okay, okay. Right. All right, Daniel Moon, the tennis guy.
Thank you. Uh, the last meeting I came in, uh, I presented the topic of having a backboard built uh, on the public tennis court area. Uh, I followed up with the invoice, uh, of the total cost and the items that would be needed. Uh, the total cost is six hundred and seven dollars. I thought that Mr. Tim Burton was going to be here tonight and I was going to have him come up here with me. I just need guidance on where to go from here with this material invoice.
You haven't purchased anything yet, have you?
Excuse me?
You have not purchased anything yet.
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. Because I haven't heard what Ron, Ron has reported, nobody discussed or anything.
Is the labor going to be volunteer to put it up or you have to base them for that?
Uh, sir, after this step, that would be my next step. To attempt to contact some local contractors that might be willing to donate their time and effort or subsidize a, a cost to erect it on the fencing. That would be my next step.
We need to wait here for Bronny then, don't we?
Yeah, uh, give her, her a copy of them and give her Ron.
Okay. Yeah. Yes, please. Yeah, thank you.
Any, any other questions?
No. No questions. All right, thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Right. Now, we're going to move on to Jacqueline Lawrence with D-VAC for the sexual assault awareness month proclamation. So I'll meet her up here. Now, Manny, we take some pictures over there. So April twenty twenty five, the proclamation for sexual assault awareness month. Whereas April is recognized as sexual assault awareness month, S-A-A-M. A time to raise awareness about the prevalence of sexual violence. Honor and support survivors and advocate for policies and programs to prevent sexual violence from occurring in our communities. And whereas one in two women and nearly one in three men will experience some form of contact sexual violence in their lifetime, underscoring the widespread and far-reaching impact of this crime across all genders. And whereas one incident of rape is reported to law enforcement of the state of Kansas every seven hours, fifty-one minutes, twenty-three seconds, highlighting the urgent need to address and combat sexual violence at local and state levels. Whereas according to the Kansas Bureau of Investigations, a rape victim is often female, ninety-four point six percent, with sixty-two point three percent of victims being under the age twenty-five. Majority of offenders are males, eighty-eight point seven, and eighteen point nine percent of these offenders are between the ages of fifteen and twenty years. And whereas the crime rate is spread relatively evenly throughout the week, with Saturdays being the most frequent day, accounting for eighteen one point one percent of reported incidents. These crimes are most likely to occur between midnight and two A.M., a critical timeframe for increased awareness and prevention efforts. And whereas in the city of Ellsworth, one incident of rape reported in twenty twenty-three, but no arrests were made. This underscores the ongoing challenges in preventing sexual violence, holding offenders accountable and ensuring justice for survivors. And whereas it is vital that we continue to raise awareness about the impact of sexual violence on survivors and communities, work toward a future where sexual violence is eradicated and advocate for stronger systems of support, reporting and accountability for those affected. And whereas we must support survivors of sexual violence, offer them the resources they need for healing and foster culture that stands firmly against sexual violence in all forms. Whereas the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas, also known as D-VAC, provides twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, free and confidential services to victims of sexual violence in the city of Solana, Kansas. And whereas D-VAC advocates are available twenty-four seven at this phone number or toll-free. Now therefore, I, Daniel A. Finnegan, Mayor of the City of Ellsworth, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-five as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Very good. Thank you. Let's get a quick picture. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Okay, uh, moving on to unfinished business. Got the twenty twenty-four audit report. So believe we'll have someone coming up.
No, that's a.
Oh, sorry, very sorry, yeah. Okay, unfinished business, the CDBG update and contract for service.
The, the, the CDBG grant. Uh, King and David is going to have a meeting April twenty-second at six thirty at the rec center. To see how much interest we got in it. But she said in the meantime, we need to have that contract signed. And it's fifteen hundred dollars to, uh, apply for it. And then if we get it, it's forty-five hundred for the environmental fee. Um, if I, if I pay out six thousand one budget, I'm pretty sure my budget's going to run over at the end of the year. So the, and she has the, uh, I included the fact sheet she sent along. Uh, which is basically what I told you. That she doesn't want that contract signed. So I don't.
Wait, do you need other funds?
Well, it's going to come out of this fund. I mean, it'll run over. That's, that's what you want to do so you know how to raise your budget right. I think it's important enough if the committee wants to.
I agree.
Put it up and, and offer some to participants in town. I think it's a good investment. Yeah.
I agree.
I think we work way through that.
Was it always a forty-five hundred dollar environmental?
This is my first one.
Okay, yeah.
I, I know there was fees before, as Daniel said, but I don't know how much they were then. Last one.
Is that catch standard?
Yeah, you know, it's been a long time since I did the housing, but yeah. And then we would have publication fee too, which was not an amount, so. And hopefully enough people come to meetings because we need to have a certain amount in order to even apply for it.
Tony, do you have to have?
Well, it's a dollar amount. It's three hundred thousand. Because we need to use it all last time. That's really, we couldn't do it last year.
Okay.
So it takes us serious. We need to. Get some people, get some help. And I didn't look at flyers all over town and in the newspaper, on Facebook.
You might reach out, Delvin, to the county appraiser, the new one, because we were in there the other day and she doesn't, she didn't know a lot about this. And she was just curious. So you might just reach out to her. Some people come in there. She can explain it to them. She didn't know like enough about it that she felt. You might just reach out to her and just kind of explain. And I told her there was a meeting, but you might just want to reach out to her.
Okay. This one of those, if you can get the people to apply, six thousand dollar public money for three hundred thousand dollar influx in the community is a good return investment.
I think if Alan can make a fly with the funding, we ought to go get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign a professional service agreement for the application preparation by the N-C-R-P-C.
Second.
All right. Councilor Don has made a motion. The council Hanson has seconded that motion to, um, approve the N-R-P-C. Professional contractor service. Did I say that right? Pretty close. Okay. All right, any debate? Any concerns? All right, hearing not all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Very good. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the water and sewer rate discussion.
Mr. Mayor, council members, um, as I've mentioned and everything before, this is the process we're going through. We've talked about the needs. Last meeting we brought up a little bit about, you know, we haven't raised rates for six years. Um, water's behind, our cash reserves are way too low. We've talked about projects, uh, from where wells been then. But down the sewer side, we also have to build the, the new or enlarge the lagoon and make it a new process. And you're, I guess, with the eight, ten million dollars. So you have to start planning financially. My goal is once we're starting to present, if anybody wants a copy of this after the meeting, so Manny will have them. So share it with them. This is a paper put together this afternoon. Of course, something was in the package about charging, looking at other cities. And it's, I don't like to look at our cities because everybody's situation is differently. If you live in Russell, we compare race to Russell, we are spot good because they have no water and they pay a lot of money for it. Same with Hayes. If you lived in Oakley, Kansas, like managed out there, you have some of the cheapest water in the state of Kansas because they said not a whole lot of aquifer, a whole lot of irrigation pressure against town yet. Um, now they have knife head props and creep up on them. So Appleton has a R O, but every town's different. You know, there's arrows that have surface water and that's expensive to treat. So it's all different game, but it's always good to look at it. I found some cities in, I remember Oakley, Oakley bases their sewer charge residential, everybody in town pays their exact same fee. They had when I was there, they raised a little bit, but not quite enough. And, you know, some lagoons not, everybody thinks lagoons are the cheap way out. Well, they are for a while. Until now that the new regulations come out and you have to make them non-discharging and make them bigger, do some more stuff. So you pay for it down the road. If you look on page two, um, in the blue, and I thought it was fancy here, maybe it's my reading, but I thought it was fancy because blue for water and green for sewer, if you look at the market flags. Um, basically what I'm proposing is a ten percent. This is again, first flush. Next we will talk about some more. My goal, bring awareness to you at the first meeting of the day. So again, I'm pulling input. I've given this all to the paper. So, you know, we'll get the word out there because we do want people to know that this is a significant increase. Um, and I understand that, but you're also going to pay the paper. Um, million, ten percent, um, charge. Um, so new fees are assessed there, combined a few of them because we have one for three inch meter. We don't have a three inch meter in town. We don't have a five inch meter. We have anything above a six. And if you ever get a day that you bring into the industry, that's going to require more than, we're going to make all kinds of agreements anyhow, so. Worry about that when that one happens because any of these meters are such, but it would take a big one to come in. I mean, I had, I think the largest meter I had in Texas was six, six inch and they use six hundred thousand gallons a day, so. It's a big meter, yeah. It is. Um, I always believe, as I mentioned last time, I believe we want to move to the base fee is just the base fee and water is above it. So, uh, Mr. Brown, Sullivan, you know, he said, well, just raise it right now, just, you know, add water to it. To me, that was too drastic. So what I'm proposing is, is base fee will include one thousand gallons of water instead of two thousand gallons. And then maybe a year or two down the road, look at something different. And, you know, move that direction, but don't move all in one day. You know, we got a little problem here, but we, you know, luckily this first, like on the sewer, you gotta start building money back in the water fund and the sewer fund as well. But our first payment on the sewer stuff will probably not be due until twenty eighth. But that gives you time to, you gotta move. But you don't have to be as drastic. You could do a plan and work towards it a little bit and try to minimize shock there about it and, and, you know, myself when I moved here, um, keep the gallon cost at ten oh three, ten thirty-three per thousand gallons. I think that is probably I think our water here is probably a bit high price, but I want to go through more stuff before I recommend doing anything else because I need to understand it. I think having two funds together, it'd become apparent to me that at least for the last two years, water was subsidized to sewer. And we gotta be careful of that and that's why we're going to move some. But again, it takes a little time to get to that point. Um, one charge we have right now is I can't understand, we've had it for years, is that on like the housing, you know, of course, one meter out front. And so they pay for the meter fee, they pay for the water, but then they charge everybody in their house in the, like at, but, um, on the pine, one of those, they charge everybody six twenty a month. I asked why? Well, we do. Well, my point is the city has no extra costs. The city has a line, they have a meter. So regardless if there's one building or four buildings that are on that system, um, like in case those multi-family housing, you know, it, it probably, I don't understand the costs. I think, I think we have to justify our costs, but how do I justify that six twenty? I don't know if I can. Because what do I give you extra there? What's the city budget? I don't think anything. Um, the impact for residential, page three, here's what the B, first column is, is present, the second column I didn't mark on top there. But the second column to the right is the proposed, as tonight, you know, we're not done yet, so we can talk about this more next meeting or massage a little bit. I went back, look, if you had raised water rates by twenty nineteen, since twenty nineteen by five percent a year for a three thousand gallon per month water use, you'd be at thirty-nine twenty today. And that doesn't include the extra money you had each year as they went up and back. So, I mean, so some of this we're doing to get there, but also it's a catch up. Now, don't feel bad. You're one of five, six hundred, eighteen, sixteen, or twenty-six cities in Kansas that we do a water rate, we don't want to raise, we don't want to raise them. And then we, then someday we have this, you know, bright light shine, that's what they have to raise, and then you have to make bigger jumps. It happens every town. I mean, I've been through it before. Um, some are a little better than others, but the, but the point is, is something you have to do. The one thing we could do, and again, I didn't wrestle today, maybe you want to, is do we establish a lower rate for water for the first, say, three thousand gallons for elderly, um, low rate, I mean. That may be a possibility. I can play with those numbers a little bit. Um, that may be workable. The other thing that may change areas, you notice on the old rate, we had like one to six inch meter, four inch meters. There was some cheaper water for a while. No, it'll all be ten thirty-three. That all goes away. Um, I, I don't think this is that bad because we're leaving the other fee a little, a little bit. I think, I think I think it's doable and it's a fair balance between small residential and larger users, okay? Uh, so that's what I meant that on the sewer side, um, and I said, I wonder if it's maybe, you have justice, I think our sewer rates are plain cheap. Um, I know I just came from a city that these are just, even with the increases, they would love this right here. Um, but again, that city, ten nights larger population, but they're looking at eighty-five million dollar project after a fifteen million dollar project three years ago. So, you know, the numbers are, say, are about the same. This one here, if you raise the minimum charge for one by ten percent, and then give zero water use. In other words, we have, it'd be a base fee and they have water at four ninety-seven, thirty percent increase, four ninety-seven. Keep on going down. You have the impact, first column, or gallons is, first column is the present rates, the, um, right column is proposed rate. And again, you do the five percent thing each year, you'd be at thirty-seven seventy-eight anyhow for the three thousand use. Um, I'm also proposing for both water and wastewater. We have, it, it kind of varies right now. For those outside of city limits, a seventy percent markup, which is fairly normal. So a few we have outside of city limits on both waters. I don't know if we have, we have maybe one or two sewers outside of city and more water than sewer. So a discussion before, I mean, again, I want everybody to see this and look at it. I gave to Alan, he wants to impose it and we didn't want a copy. Manny has a copy here. Um, we can title it a little better, but do that next time. But the point is, is I think we have to move there, but again, I think this is good because, I mean, I always say we don't want to hide anything here because they're going to find out in their first bill, that's why we tell them ahead of time, you know? And then if they have any input, they can come to the next meeting and we can discuss that. Bottom line is you need more dollars. I mean, you just have to, you know, in three years, three, four years, the survey's got to be basically from what they are now. Um, now will that be that drastic? I don't know. I think if you don't do anything, it will be, if you do something now and start doing some planning, some budget, maybe you can minimize a little bit. Um, I wish you had started three years ago, but we didn't. Let's go for it, you know?
Yeah.
Build it, build it, breathe it, get over it, yeah.
If you compare apples and apples, you have ten dollars and thirty-three cents per thousand is pretty cheap compared to going to a convenience store and pay two dollars for a bottle.
And, and our.
He's talking about that.
And our water is tested.
Yeah.
This may not be.
Yeah.
So.
So tell me about the out of district people, seventy percent markup, do they have a markup right now?
Yes.
What is it now?
It ranges a little bit here and there. It averages about seventy-five. Seven seventy-five.
So you're going to bring them all even?
Because isn't it about double the user fee or something?
Yeah.
My mom's out there.
There's some difference out there. I just, that's the number I used to look at the stuff here. You know, Mr. Brown's numbers, I looked at his numbers, of course, he paid for his study. He's probably a little more aggressive than I am. Um, I think mine are the numbers I put in and they look pretty dang aggressive here, you know? Because you're talking about twenty dollars, twenty some dollar increase, twenty dollar increase for a three thousand gallon user for both water and sewer. I mean, that's, that's big increase. I get that. But it's usually more aggressive. But I think what we have to do is, I think we need to, to move forward and do something, but also continue to analyze costs and everything else. I think split the funds up. And there's nothing wrong with having funds here. Justice City had it here until I got there. Hayes has their funds together. Um, but I think you got to be a little more sophisticated to do it. So, and I think Hoizen may, may, may try to put theirs together right now. So there's no right or wrong. You didn't do anything wrong. I just feel splitting is more advantageous to somebody to work through them. And I think it's important, I mean, when you apply for grants or, you know, revolve alone with Kansas Department of Health and Environment, you know, water and wastewater, uh, revolve loans are two completely different offices that will talk to each other. They're different qualifications. They treat them separately. But if, if you're applying for, you know, I think there may be some chance, I saw here some chances, some more loan forgiveness. Those as guaranteed, but you had to be able to identify those costs that came out of wastewater. But to do that, to get loan forgiveness, you gotta keep your rates up too to be, you know, a somewhat relative rate. You know, your rates, your rate of water right now is probably state average, give or take, uh, for sewer, the most average. And, uh, just something you gotta work on and, and do that. But here's a start. If you have any thoughts, tell me, email me, whatever. Um, more discussion next time we get, you're out in public. Um, again, anybody who wants a copy, there is, if, if anybody wants more data, just have a holler at me. Um, more discussion next time, we get, you're out in public, um, again, anybody who wants a copy, there is, if, if you know anybody who wants more data, just have a holler at me.
Yeah, I don't think that plan, where you keep the, because seniors do use less water, so for the, I mean, they may not.
Well, first of all, you never wanna go income based, um, don't wanna do that, we, we're not in that business.
What would you, I didn't hear what you said.
We don't wanna go income based, and we don't wanna go age based.
Right, but it's usage, you're saying it's.
Usage, so do you make the first, you know, you know, right now, we gave two thousand gallons in the minimum, we give everybody in town, the large user. Um, except, I'm not sure if our costs right now for the meter fee, the base fee, are covering the basis of keeping the wells up. Because we have to have the wells, we have to have a pipeline, we have to have the water plant, we have to buy chemicals. Regardless of we sell one gallon of water tomorrow, or we sell fifty thousand gallons of water, we're daily in series, rather than that, but, but. We have to say, our, our cost to the city, in our infrastructure, in our fixed asset costs, don't change, you know? If we almost sell half the water tomorrow, we sell today, I've got the same amount of employees. But I also have to have employees on call, because when your water line breaks tomorrow night, or whenever it breaks. We are able to respond, and, and there's a cost to that, I mean, um, you know, the company you work for has a, of them, because. You don't know if you're gonna be out for the next fifteen hours or not, or, or when that's, and when that's gonna be.
And it's, uh, you know, it's, you got your meter fee, there's no two thousand kilowatts you get, I mean, it's just your fan right on back too.
I'm assuming, I don't watch your meter, I, I.
It's like.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven now.
Oh, it's D S D O R. I know what it is on the farms, but anyhow, it, you know, I think there are reasons, it's just, it's just a change. You know, unfortunately, we have to do, we have to do many a little more aggressively, but we just gotta, you know?
Well, and we never did raise them, so I mean, we didn't do anything.
And don't, and don't blame us.
I don't know why we did.
Yeah, I'm not blaming anybody here, we just, nobody likes to. Nobody likes to, and, but, yeah. Again. They give her a bad guy, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for being a bad guy.
Everything, I mean, it's, it's got, something's gotta be done.
Yeah.
You know?
Let me play with some other options, maybe something.
I like that usage, because, I, I like what you said, not income, you're not targeted, you're not trying to do anything, but as a general rule, those people. And I, I mean, they're, you know, they're, they're holding on.
I'm taking, I'm taking a little bit of that away by taking two thousand gallons away.
Right.
But maybe we could do something a little bit, let me.
Cause I think.
I'll play with that.
That would help, yeah, help it to pass and people.
But again, I, you still gotta be careful, because this rate right here for thirty gallon water, three thousand gallon water use, is not outlined. And be careful, anytime you shift. You don't wanna shift on everybody else, cause you could say, oh, they can pay for it, no, we don't, we don't develop rates that way, because if we try to bring business to the town. They're gonna look at those rates, so you just can't dump on big business, or medium sized business, or. They can afford to pay it, and they can't, you don't wanna go there.
Yeah.
So.
We'll work on it, and that one, we kind of.
Here's a start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very good, anybody got any questions around this subject? Okay, all right. Moving on to new business, the twenty twenty-four audit reports, come on up.
Hey, I'm Holly Chen, and it was a few over in my spiel in the past, so I go through this quickly, um. If you have any questions, I hope you already looked it over and had a chance to go through the comments, so I won't read every one of them to you. Um, to start out with, I have the government's letter here up first. Uh, this letter is just to let you know of any difficulties we had during the audit, anything that you encountered, um, going through it. Uh, we did not have any disagreements with management, uh, we did not have any difficulties, and they were, they were fantastic getting us the stuff this year. Uh, as well as being really organized, so it, it went very smoothly, we do have some general comments on page three. And, uh, these comments, uh, are not new, uh, most of these are the same ones we've had the last couple of years, and they are working on them. They're not, the ones right here on page three are just in fact, it's all, uh, it's a small city, so wherever you can document sign offs, document review. Um, make sure that there is extra steps in there, since the city is so small, uh, to just prevent anything from happening. So, those are generally what all of those are, and I won't read through those, and hopefully we've all had a chance to look through those. And then on page four, these are what we call our more significant efficiency. Um, we do have two material weaknesses this year, the first one is on segregation of duties, which you probably will never, never get out of. Just because you're so small, um, and there's not a whole lot of overlapping on controls. The second one is in regards to accounts payable and encumbrances, um, at the end of the year specifically, the city needs to record all of this on the books. To make sure they're matching the budget here, that they were approved, um, we did have a couple big ones this year, and one of them was actually in regards to the K D H study.
We should have listened to.
You did, okay, perfect, so, uh, we're, we were missing that one off the book, so we did have to make it a material.
Yeah, we, we make a motion or do a pay or a purchase order from the departments. You know, you make a motion on December thirty-first, it is a that year expense. Even though, like in the case of fire trucks right now, or like an ambulance like that, you may not see it for eighteen months, but. It wasn't, if you did it on December thirty-first, it's an expense for last year.
And we felt like with this one, uh, regardless of the outcome, if you're getting K D H long, you have to do the pre-engineering, so we still need it to get that recorded. Um, and I'll flip on over to the audit report, starting on page one, two and three, this is it. Um, where we give your, our opinion, uh, we weigh gap, or you guys weigh gaps, so we give an adverse opinion on that, basically saying we're not giving you one. And then, um, the third paragraph down is where we give the unmodified opinion on regulatory relations of accounting, uh, this is the highest opinion you can receive. Basically, uh, stating that we don't believe there are any material, uh, findings in there, and, um, that the unencumbered cash balance is, um, presented fairly. We then go into responsibilities of management, as well as what auditors are supposed to do for their responsibilities, there's often confusion there, so I always remind you to read through that. Uh, it's just a good reminder of what we're actually doing in this financial statement audit. And then on page four is that financial statement that we're issuing that opinion on, and as of year end, you had an ending unencumbered cash balance. At three point six million, um, this is a decrease of about four hundred and sixty thousand, uh, from the prior year. But like I said, we did book five hundred and seventy-five thousand, I believe, or five fifty, um, yeah, five fifty for the, um. Pre-engineering, so right there's a good chunk of your difference, uh, between yours. And that also, we put a footnote in there on page, um, twelve, it's note fifteen. It just lets the reader know that there is a contingency out there with your, with your sewer legions, and so, um, this is why this work is being done. Um, the next several pages are the notes, and outside of that note fifteen, I don't have anything new from the prior year that came out required to be put in there. So I won't go through those, but if you turn to page thirteen, this is the long-term debt schedule. And right now, you have five point nine million outstanding, um, between all of your bonds, notes, loans, and finance leases. And expected payoff date is twenty forty-one. And then the next several pages are budget statements for each individual fund. Um, we did not have any budget violations or any statute violations, um, for the year, so there's nothing, uh, to go over there. I won't go through each of these individual funds unless you have a specific question for me on somebody, and you were reading it. Audit, and that shall. I'll take any questions if you have any.
So, Paul, sounds like the gals are doing a good job downstairs.
The whole staff is, man.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're doing our jobs, in other words, very good.
Well, we want to get better, I think, we think, we talk about that downstairs all the time, make sure we don't cross, even. Not on finance side, but we have HR each year, every day, we, because it's like, because, you know, we have. One with the, uh, son that works for us, and we have another one that her daughter works off and on with the retribution. And, you know, my rule is, is that on that one there, you share with this, you share with somebody else, we just start getting those in place, and, you know? Um, trying to prevent things from that, I mean.
We, we always just say, no, no isolation, like it, whoever prepares it, you make sure someone else reviews it. Um, that has to be Allen, if that has to be someone from the council coming in, um, these smaller cities, it's, it's harder to, to get that. But sometimes that's where council has to step up and help.
I think we would do, we get, not financial, but like, when I put my stuff in for the package, you know, I, I approve. You know, the, the elements stuff for the package, but when I put it in there, Angela proves mine, you know? Unfortunately, she gets all my typos, so.
Second set of eyes.
Yeah, and then, and we, I think we're, you know, they're, they're really kissing all that, dude.
Good, any questions for Daniel?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah. We do need a motion to accept the audit report.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the audit outlook for the city of Ellsworth for the year ended on December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, be accepted.
That make you say it.
Yeah, that's twenty-five. It says, but this is an audit for twenty-five and it's a twenty-four, but.
I'll second. President Council Coats, uh, makes a motion to approve the audit report, uh, for the, uh. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four, Councilor Panzer has seconded that motion. Any debate, any concerns? All right, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Test, is this working?
A quick question before I just go on, so. Do we need to look, like, I think that firm does a great job, we use them for the extension office, do we need to, like, every so many years, use a different?
I would suggest look every five, probably.
Okay.
This is what your third year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, um, you know, I use this firm in Justice City as well. You're probably five, six years there already, and you've got renewed once, yeah, that, were we three or five there?
We were every three.
Three, yeah, it's three or five, so you can just look at, just look around, um.
We, we will, um, send an engagement letter for renewal, and a lot of time, it's totally up to you to, to go off the grid. So, it, it almost happens either way.
Right, I just wasn't sure, like, how long, cause that's, like, one of my first years on council. We got bids for somebody else, and again, I think.
I think it was three years ago, yeah, from, I think, Barnes.
Very good, um, on to the Ellsworth Housing Authority Board of Directors' appointment.
Real simple, they had a appointment in there for the council to consider. Right pager. My, my new neighbor, Brian Getville.
Okay, so we're just approving Doug Stefford then?
Yeah, that's what they recommended, they've been on the board, um, I think all five of the board members, I've been to three meetings down, and they're all there, they're all highly engaged, so. I think you have the committee.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Doug Stefford to a three-year term on the Board of Directors of the Ellsworth Housing Authority.
A second.
Councilor Bernard has made a motion to approve Doug Stefford to a three-year term. Uh, on the Board of Directors for the Ellsworth Housing Authority, um, President of Council Coats has seconded that motion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Water tank maintenance contract, next item on the agenda.
Mayor and council members, um, the city has had water tank tower, uh, contracts with this firm, one of the other two towers. They didn't do one of this one here, because this was a tower by the pool that was, um, basically redone in like twenty seventeen, eighteen, somewhere in that time period. However, now it's time to probably get a water tank maintenance contract, um, I think staff has a good work relationship with this firm. They come in, they, you know, do the annual inspections, strain and look at, make appearances needed, they'll do a painting on it, inside your next, the ten-year project, so. Um, I, I recommend to go forward, because again, those are big assets that cost a lot of money, I don't know what a tower costs nowadays, but I'm. I'm guessing a tower costs about five bucks a gallon to build, so, um, take a two hundred thousand gallon tower, it's a lot of money, so that's why you wanna keep up, so. I think they're, these are well, um, documented expenditures, and, and worth keeping out, but again, the city, good luck with it. Why they're not tied all to one contract, I have no idea, no, nor do you as well, but, um, nevertheless, uh, it's, it's a good program. Uh, it's a good program to have, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the water tank maintenance contract with Utility Service Company for the. One hundred fifty thousand gallon water tower at four oh nine West Eleventh Street, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
I'll second. Councilor Hanson has made a motion to, um, approve the water tank maintenance contract with the Utility Service Company. For the hundred fifty thousand dollar gallon water tower at four oh nine West, West Eleventh Street. And authorize myself to sign the contract, Councilor Johnson has seconded that motion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion carries. All right, um, initial discussion of the twenty twenty-six city of Ellsworth budget.
Mr. Mayor and council members, um, now's time to start, um. Trying to do a few things different, I included in the back of a, um, a budget calendar, calendar that I wanted the staff to work with. There might be one change, so last week Friday, my weekly announcement to you, I was worried about some of the stuff with Senate bill, and one that was. Kind of moved through in the dark, it died though, so we have to worry about this year. I do think one change that may happen, I haven't seen it yet, but I believe it didn't happen, is that in the past, budgets were due by August twenty-fifth. Unless you did the R and R hearing, then they would do October one, we believe they may be moved all to October one. So we could loosen up, we have to, I agree on what you, I like the budget by July, let's get it done, and work through it, I think we can. My goal is this year, from, in two weeks from now, I'm gonna be with all those departments head, one-on-one, and we're gonna ask a lot of questions. What do you have for equipment, what condition is, and start getting some long-term goals as far as, you know, if you have a truck that's twenty-eight years old. You know, it's gonna be twenty-nine years old next year, what, what do you need in your department, and start planning what year that needs to be addressed. Uh, that way you can start planning financially down the road ahead of time. Uh, the other thing I think we have to go look at is just, are we spending the stuff, I mean, you know? You gotta realize cities, the basic role of the city is provide fire, police, streets, water, sewer, that's basically the role. Now we have to enter things, we have parks and rec, which are great for quality of living, and we need to have those for, for our wellness and everything else that bring people to our community. Because a town without park, or a play, or, or, or pool, or rec center, I mean, those are things, but where they fit in, how you pay for. And I think we had a lot of discussions, so we're gonna start engaged that, Angela will do the budget workshop, so basically work through it, you know? I think our middle level's a little high here, uh, do we wanna back it off some, perhaps? You know, the haunting thing out here is, you know, the state legislature, there was people out this year that really wanted to make R and R so difficult that. He would take, the, the thing that came out Thursday night, it didn't pass, well, it was taken an eighty percent vote. Well, that ain't gonna happen, folks, so I think we also gotta be careful, even though. Even I wanna be, take care of taxpayers' dollars, cause I'll get in those too, but you also might be responsible, because we don't wanna overreact either. Because it may catch you down the road, so I think there's innocent people to talk about when we get there. If you have anything that you guys want, you know, send me the email, tell me the meeting, whatever, if you wanna look at a budget, let's talk about those things. But I wanna become real involved, but my goal is to have the budget all done, finalized until, at the July fourteen meeting. Um, have a hearing in August, and put that baby to bed, um, and move on to, to better, better things.
Good, yeah, that's, real good.
Unfortunately, I like it, so.
Good. What are, what are you, what are, what are your, what does your gut tell you, like?
I don't know.
Is it labor, or you have no idea, labor issue, or?
No, I, I think so, it's just gonna look at, you know? You know, I think the thing that, and I feel bad some days, so I'm here, I'm a new guy coming in here with tons of experience, but I'm new to this city, and going like. So why are you doing it this way? Well, we always have, well, why are you doing it that way, and I feel, I go home at night, I'm sure Delvin's gonna like, um, you know, like, out in that one subdivision, um. Where the council weighs setbacks back then, but didn't go through the proper process, well, let's do it again, no, we're not gonna do it again, we're gonna follow the rules you have. You know, one rule I always tell all employees is, everybody, let the ordinance be your guide. That's your guide, if you don't like the order, if you're pushing something, I will not let, and if you, I will argue if you, oh, I'm gonna break the ordinance, I'm gonna say, no, you can't. And you're gonna say, I don't, well, I'll change it, you can change it, but you can't break it till you change it. Uh, you know, twenty-four years ago, next Monday, I went through a tornado, and I had a council member says, well, we got a little bend on this one. No, we changed some ordinance, but we didn't bend them ever, and it made for better operation. I mean, it's trying to do business properly.
Yeah. All right, anything else on that subject, anybody? Okay. Uh, moving on to, um, resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen. Uh, moving on to um, resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen. Um, the amended twenty twenty five fee schedule.
And this is to offset, count, I mean, your customers, to offset the pool rates we talked about last, two meetings ago, they were approved. But Angela has a resolution, so let's keep her happy. And then it's all in one place, too.
Okay. Uh, Mister Mayor, I move to adopt resolution two zero two five dash one H, amending the twenty twenty five fee schedule.
I'll second.
Counselor Bernard has made a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen, amending the twenty twenty five fee schedule. Counselor Hanson has seconded that motion. Any debates?
I have just one question, go ahead. Where it says license fees and services both water, we have two hundred dollars slash for a thousand gallons, is that right?
That's what was proved last fall, we haven't touched that one yet.
Okay.
Still working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, this, tonight, the only change is to adopt those new pool fees.
Okay, very good.
Is there any changes needed? I'm not arguing.
All right, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Our motion carries. All right, next item, the water service request and extension water line.
Uh, Mayor and council members, this uh goes um, the property west of the city shop out there. There's a building there, there is city sewer there, but there's not city water. He's, he's trying to get that business fired up and going, and he's city water there. So how do you get water there? Um, they talked about the option of putting a, a tap at Lavon Street. But being that he had, there's cars on the east side, loans with the trees, um, can't get through those. So then they want to go into the ditch or the right-of-way. I talked to the city attorney, I find more was concerned than he is, because I don't believe you want private lines in the city right-of-way. Likewise, if you're gonna have public lines on private property, you have proper easements in place. So I think we had a couple of options here. One is, the city puts the line in, and we build the cost to the property owner. Now, if you want to do a policy to say, we would do it for a certain percent because we want to encourage businesses, that's an option. I'm not saying, I'm not leading either way, but just throwing that out there, that's an option. So like, hey, the guy wants to get a business there, employ people, we like that idea, um. We'll give it a twenty-five percent. I mean, the possibility. Uh, the, the weird part of this is, is that water line for eleventh ninth street. Because he owns that whole two blocks there, the whole, that whole, from ninth to eleventh, um, across the whole way, so he owns all that, so um, the other option, of course, would be, and again, I, I probably could live with, and I did mention that I think, well, there is, is allowed to be in there, but the city would grant an easement to the property, the person that put that line in the ditch. Um, that's, that's, that's fairly similar to my mind, a little different, is like when you would kill the companies, um. Because we have franchise agreements with all the utility companies, from electric to natural gas to telephone to cable to the city has a franchise agreement where they can use all of our right-of-way. I don't have to ask, because we just have, it's a blanket that, you know, your firm can use our right-of-ways, because, you know, we have franchise agreements. So is that a possibility? Maybe, I'm not sure if it's good or bad or difference. Now, if you want to run across this line, we can do the tap on eleventh street. Well, do. But again, there's a lot of obstacles on the east side there. That farmhouse over in that far bottom corner over here, um, they ran, they actually ran up to eleventh street to get water.
No.
And that's outside the state limits, so.
Alan, the only thing I wanted to say, and I've thought about this even this evening. I agree now, like, there's all these different ways to do it, could all, from my perspective, those are all valid, and as long as we document, we're gonna document it right, so it'll be fine. What would be really good, though, is if we pick one tonight, we should really, I'd just maybe get Alan, write it up into a policy and try and be somewhat consistent going forward. Uh, so we don't reinvent the wheel with whatever we pick. That's just a buyout, you know, because these things, they don't happen every year, they don't happen every month, but they happen over every couple of years, and so it'd be nice to write down, be like, okay, this is kind of how we do it. We stay in the public right-of-way, give an easement, or we make it go private, to see that, I mean, whichever way you do it, um, let's try and be as consistent as we can.
But the thing I'm thinking of is we got Alan's know-how and your legalities, so which one option do you guys recommend for both parties?
My, 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 my initial is, the city puts it in, we build it all to the property owner, um, and we own it. With that said, though, that has its issues, because, you know, I, I've seen some extensive before, where later on, you add on, and you add on, and you add on, and then they actually pay the first guy back. But no one's gonna add on. I mean, everybody is served right now, it's kind of a unique situation. And you're gonna say, well, this will be out there, you know, but my point is, is believe it or not, sometime in the next twenty-five year period, somebody's gonna say, in a different part of the council, well, you did it over there. So you need to do it for me now. I mean, you know, I got brought up after your septic tank, and here we go. You know, I get that message again, so, you know, you did it for her, you know, so.
Yeah, if we do it the way Alan just said, where the city owns the line, but builds the owner, even though for this one, extension of the line isn't likely, that would be consistent with the different parts out, we would, because then we would the advantage there is that the city controls the line, if somebody else were to tap on, we would have a say in what happened in this development, I think. I, I, I mean, but you could do it the way, like, they could put it in the ditch and rent an easement, might be cheaper, because um, they would do it, and, and we allow them.
There will also be less exposure on the city too, because once it leaves that meter, it's his all the way, two blocks, he's gotta fix it.
That's true, and, but he has, he's been a problem, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, then he'd have, he's meant to fix the line and be less.
That may be the happy medium.
But he's gonna pay for it anyway.
Well, it'll be cheaper over here, because we would probably want at least to a two-inch, or he might buy it.
Well, I heard it, he was thinking one inch, who, the guy he was gonna get to put.
Okay, one inch.
Just gonna go a one inch from, if they had to go from eleven.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's, we would see nine hundred, and they probably won't.
Yeah.
And I was, and I would be, if I was there, don't get me wrong, that's why, because I have to be on the environment.
And I know like Lance over here, he, his water pressure is terrible. We're here, but, you know, that's his line there. Now, I didn't, and that's what we didn't know, is that maybe if that, if they would ever tap on to get better pressure, that would maybe be the only thing that you don't know.
Yeah.
That would never happen.
It'd be nice if everyone went away in town, but half loops.
Yeah.
And it, it's expensive, and you gotta, you know, you could do it in your parts down, better go to parts down. Uh, you know, we thought about running it on the south side of the water plant, but the problem is, is that's a busy right-of-way. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff in there.
Yeah.
You know, um. If I was gonna leave, then one, just recommend to you, probably Ferris Air Buddy, grant an easement of the, the west ten-foot major or like that.
Right.
Might be the one that I would consider. Making air, try to find a road to the mill, but still be a consistent policy.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we should go with what the, they just said on the line in the easement, because if we wait till the next meeting, and this guy's gonna keep waiting to find out what we're doing. So I did give him a good.
So, yeah, you go, you go, you go Alan's direction with the easement, I think I'll have to draft with Alan the easement that you guys will approve next meeting, it's another something we do.
Okay.
And at the next meeting, we would, you guys would adopt a grant of a right-of-way, we would grant him an easement within your right-of-way to the individual, and then once he has that, he can just do his own line, because he has a commission to be in. Does that sound good to you, Alan, or you'd like to your own?
I think that's a good option.
I'm good with that, you guys like it.
I am, I.
Yeah.
But I don't think anybody else would ever go, that would be the only thing.
But we're documented, we have a process.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Onward, uh, police vehicle purchase. And is Jack being coming up, or? Yeah.
So, she's authorized to meet their vehicles. They're probably, they're just one, um, they're probably the same, present staffing, they're trying to hire more, I know. And she feels her father would give the tour here.
Yeah, so, uh, Chief Kenny has decided this to be the vehicle we should be going for right now. The only information he's provided to me on it that isn't in your brief is that it's white color, has about forty-nine thousand miles, and it'll take about a month to turn around after it's approved, to get it, it's actually from engagement. I know we were approved back in January to approve or to lease or up to ninety thousand dollars to purchase two police vehicles with local loan. So this would follow with, and what was already approved in January. Uh, the only thing we need to do is put the radio on it, but one of our in-office units already has a radio, so it'd just be a flip over, and the county, as a whole, is already operating radio, so that would really be a concern with this one. I think we got decals from our last decal purchase too, so I don't think there'd be any cost to be on these. Cost that he hasn't, I know it says the vehicle's priced at thirty-eight, nine fifty, but then doing quick math, three payments at the fourteen point eight, basically come out to forty-two, eight, forty-three years.
Yeah, do the lease purchase. And the first payment's not due next year. Helps you budget out too. I realized since you started hiring, it worked a couple of years ago, but it's, it's one move yet. Has to be getting a handle on everything.
Sounds a little good. Okay.
Is this just an FYI, or do you need to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, uh, Mister Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the police vehicle priced at thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars in police department to get it. Like, um, there's no deal with your lead on, uh, let's make it official.
Or just as proposed, yeah.
All right, Counselor Bernard has made a motion to reduce the proposed police vehicle for price of thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Counselor Panzer has seconded that motion. Any debate, discussion? All right, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, wrapping it up here, um. Delvin, uh, did you have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay. Patrick's got something?
Yeah. Sorry, Counsel, you just give me twenty seconds. I want to let you know, you were talking earlier tonight about chickens. And I want to make sure. A few months ago, I helped, last year, I helped the city of Wyans do their chicken ordinance.
Right.
So this is my opportunity to say, I am well versed in bird law.
Thank you.
No, right.
Yeah.
I remember about that.
Did they pass it?
They, they did, yeah, and I, they passed it, it, you know, it was on a serious, you know. It tends to be about fairly evenly, sixty, forty, fifty, fifty in places. It was somewhat controversial for them. They have a permitting process. They had, I think, I, I don't think I speak out of turn, I say, they had a lot of people who were not, they didn't have ordinance, and said you couldn't have a chicken, but people weren't following the ordinance. So when you do that, you know, it's like, do we try and meet people where they're at, and on, um, it's interesting discussing. Probably hear a lot from those sides.
Can you bring a copy of that to the next meeting?
Yeah, I'll forward it to Alan all night, and I have tons of them.
Oh, you got tons of them.
Yeah, I mean, there, there, you know, there are a million ways to do this, there really are.
I would say chickens are interesting, because.
Why did the chicken cross the road, Ben?
First, the first chickens in the state allowed in cities, were all on the east, east coast, they're, they're walking, the Johnson County cities, uh, people in western Kansas who grew up with chickens and had to clean the chicken houses out because you got home too late on Friday night, um, really don't care. And, and now it's starting to creep west now. I do think there's a lot of people out there going like, well, you know, baby chicks are now four or five bucks each. And, you know, we're gonna die, and by the time they kind of coop, you could be in that three to thousand dollar range or more. Um, all of a sudden, those, you know, I bought it, it's just safe for three ninety-nine, and they're still here. So, I mean, and they're gonna go up in price and everything else. You know, the thing we have to watch is, is, you know, Lawrence, for example, allows even, what's gonna be next? I need to have a goat in my yard, so I can eat a goat, because, you know, cattle prices are high right now, and they're historic highs right now, so am I gonna have that? I think those are the things you always gotta worry about, you know. Um. Yeah, I got tons of chickens, so. We, we, it's up there.
Well, I see there's been a lot of different things you, I don't, I don't know what's I had right now.
Good, thank you. So, Delvin, nothing, uh, fire chief's not here, golf superintendent's not here, police chief, Jeff, do you have anything else you want to say from the department?
You guys are going for chickens, just make sure we have an actual plan for being at large, and then something for boosters if they become a nuisance, so they're all gonna actually, yeah, that's the new ordinance, reach all for chickens.
There you go, good.
All right.
That's good. Yeah, and I, I, my request was from someone with a limited income. They were just making an economic case, so.
They're really not.
It's hard to.
They're really not.
Right, but they, they feel like they are, and it's.
You buy the chickens.
I'm sure, but they don't think that.
You're, you're paying more than seven.
But they're looking at it from, I'm gonna have it for the next few years, and that stuff.
Unless they die.
I mean, we still gotta cover some things, and at least, yeah, we had in lines, but.
Yeah.
Can I raise them for harvest?
And rather a lot of issues, yeah.
Can I sell it?
Right.
You know, and, of course, six chickens is gonna be tough.
And here we go.
That's right.
That's good.
Yeah, here we go.
Yeah, um, rat director, not there, okay? Um. Street foreman, anybody back there? Nobody back there, okay? And water and sewer, I'd like to see maybe that chair. All right, city attorney, do you have anything else?
Nope, that's all.
All right, city clerk, Manny, do you have anything? Okay. City administrator.
Of course I do. Um. Got a report today, one of all five is down right now, uh, but down since Thursday night. Um, legislature came out with a legislature problem, but we're gonna have to have cars come out to try to pull the case and look at, um, don't know what costs are already, but we got, got them before it on it. Um, like I said, the chicken stuff, we just talk about all these different things, I mean, that's, that's trend right now, and everyone wants to say, even Hayes is booing horse chickens finally. Um, Justice City has not yet, so, uh, and there's a holdout city there, but, um, we'll, we'll work on that. Um. The goods, uh, we're, we're, and, um, our engineer on that, so we'll keep maybe more ports than that, to fight a good project. Uh, fair building, um, Sarah reached out to me today, and she wants to meet with me this week. Uh, she's been held up, but, uh, being busy herself, so I'll talk to Sarah there this week. Uh, audit again, uh, kudos to the staff, Angela, and me and her, all by downstairs, and all with the staff. I think we're developing a process, and the staff buying into a lot of things, we're, we're saying on finance and the budget and stuff like that, so, uh, I feel good about that move forward, so that's all I have to say.
All right, very good. Uh. Nothing else, we'll move on. Um. Tyler, you have anything?
Uh, no, I know.
Okay, Jessica?
No.
Aaron?
No.
Don?
I guess I have a couple of things, um. I can remember in history, and Alan, I don't think any of us were, were around then, but Ellsworth did some test drilling two years ago. I remember that we spent the money, maybe it was a core back when I was on, or after that, we had another company come in and test drill some location size for more water wells for the city. Is anyone familiar with that?
We, well, it's when Scott was here, we were doing it, we.
Okay.
Drilled some out by like the golf course, or maybe further south than that. They, but it, yeah, it's, I mean, it hasn't been that long.
It hasn't been that long. I remember reading or hearing about it, but I didn't know what we ever did, but that or whatever become of it. Yeah, we didn't, I mean, I think it was so far to get her piped.
And add too much sodium.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, so, that may not be feasible to even review it, but that's just something that was brought to my attention. And then, uh, have we sent applications for a new city clerk yet?
We're still, we're gonna bring ordinances to the next meeting probably, on city clerk duties, uh, HR duties, because separate that, make it, make it clear to everybody.
And then, are we, we're short one officer, is that right?
We're short one, right now.
Yeah.
But we should do.
Yeah.
Okay, because someone asked me if we would have twenty-four hour service, and I told him I couldn't answer that. I thought, I heard that we were not having any of them from two o'clock in the morning.
There is a line where we don't have an officer on, but there are two of us that have been put on call for various days the week due to staffing.
Okay.
We've reached the point where unless Jerry's giving up to the admin duties as the chief, and we're working in a triple shift, it's impossible, and then if we have anybody that needs a day off, or has an appointment or anything like that, we have another officer coming in overtime, which is gonna contribute to burnout. So the chief made a decision that we're dropping twenty-four hours until we can get some staffing. We have a new guy that's in training right now.
It, it was on social media, so that's just why I asked.
About a month.
I didn't know anything.
Aren't you guys been back about a month?
He's on about week three, you have to get that program.
Yeah, we don't want him to get out there too soon, so.
Yeah. Okay. Boy, everything's doing good. Then, uh, on the canron addition, I think, is that what that's called out here where you live, Karen? Is that called canron?
Canron.
Yeah, canron.
Canron addition.
Um. Haven't we in the past, I don't think we've got a street department here, haven't we in the past put perimeter tall along the edges of? Haven't we in the past, I don't think the street department here, haven't we in the past put perimeter tall along the edges of our. City easement, so the residents know where the, uh, where the line is. So then they're not mowing out into the sand in the street. Does that make sense? I think we put perimeter and filled all that one time.
Don't do it.
Well, if you did.
Don't do that? Oh, okay.
Nothing's been done because the grass. In front of my house, that is almost to the middle of the road.
I know the resident from out there asked me why the city doesn't spray the, the weeds out there in the street. And I said, I don't know if they do or can or are allowed to.
They don't mow me. Again, I wasn't here years ago.
Yeah.
Why this city allowed an addition without curb and gutter in streets is beyond me.
Yeah.
And if the residents out there want curb gutter streets, they can petition the city, they'd be signed, they would get special assessments. Um, to get the job done, so we'll see what's fine is, but they'll have to pay for it, like, everybody else has to.
Okay.
And so it's a dual project. When you build a subdivision, you know, and you require curb and gutter and streets and everything else, you know. Um, that cost should never be borne by the entire city. It should be borne by those that gain from it. And the development is stellar and everything else, so.
Yeah, so in other words, if Karen, or I'm just using you for an example, Karen. Let's say she's got a bunch of grass and weeds out in the street. She's not breaking any rules, going out and spraying that with criminal tall ground several in herself, is she?
No.
Okay.
I mean, we are technically, I'm responsible in front of my house, when, you know, whether for what goes between this, the, the street and the curb and gutter. It's about the gutter. Um, that's my responsibility and I, I usually do.
Yeah, one lady asked me, says, well, if I go out there with a soil sterilant and spray out there and the city sees me. They're like, they're gonna be mad at me for spraying city property. I said, well, I don't know how that works.
My, no, I maintain property. I mean. I'm responsible for my property to the, to the middle of the street, even though it's a city right away.
Okay.
You know. Because like, like most dudes here, that from the curb to your, your property line is probably.
I don't have a curb either.
If you had a curb, if you had a curb, the first, first five, ten feet, but it's not your property. So you're maintaining city property right now.
Yeah.
Because you don't own just to the curb. You own, well, whatever, we're in the public right away.
You, you do own it subject to the right way, so you do own.
No, you don't own it. The city owns right away. I'm right on this one. I'll challenge attorney on this one.
But anyway, we, if one of, if people live on a sandy street and they go out in the street and spray. We have no orders against, that's why, that's what I'm trying to say. Cause if she wants to go out spraying or something.
Problem you may have is if she gets run off and everything else, she may be liable to her neighbors.
Yeah, okay. I just wanna get that, that's been asked quite a bit in Tyler's part of town and also out there. All questions answered?
Are better paid than my, are better maintained than mine.
Well, it's got, it's chip sealed, fair brings it, it's flat, I mean, it's just.
But you have sand on yours. We don't have any.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah. All right, so Darcy is, um, doesn't have any comments, so. You may not know this, but every year I get letters from seniors at Ellsworth High School. I think it's extra credit in their government class, so. Every time I email them back, I'm in to talk to, have a two way conversation. And every time they don't come back. Um, so this time I emailed the gentleman back and I said, hey, is it okay if I read your letter to counsel? Um, he not only said I could, but he said I can give, give you his name, which I, I won't do. I think it's privacy, but I will tell you, something to think about when we talk about the budget. Um, this gentleman's name, I'm not gonna say it, he's a senior at Ellsworth Junior Senior High School. I'm emailing you today about the dips and potholes on the roads around the high school and in the residential areas in our town. The dips and potholes are an extreme problem for many drivers. The dips around the schools and the residential areas have gotten extremely bad. Many drivers who have lower to the ground cars are forced to maneuver around the dips to avoid scratching or damaging their vehicles. The fact that they need to do these things shows how bad the conditions of the roads are in Ellsworth, Kansas, and how horribly they need to be fixed or repaired. The worst of the dips are around the Ellsworth High School and leading of the school. At Spring and Tenth Street, there are three extremely large and deep dips that cause drivers to maneuver around them to avoid damaging their car. Other dips here in Ellsworth are on Elizabeth Street and even more leading along Spring Street. While these dips do cause drivers to slow down and pay more attention to the road, it is ridiculous that drivers are having to maneuver around them to keep their cars. From being damaged. For the drivers who drive nice cars, even a little damage, uh, to their vehicles can cost them a decent amount of money just to fix the damage. In conclusion, these are the reasons I believe that we need to fix these roads to not only make it safer for drivers here in Ellsworth, but to keep the residents. To not have to worry about ruining their vehicles and stop having damages caused due to simple fixes. I would like to thank you for taking the time at your schedule to read my letter and any thoughts on improving the safety of Ellsworth's driving, so. Something to keep in mind as we do the budget. So with that said, we have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
All right, President of the Council of Cokes has made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Counselor Panzer has seconded that motion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.